I'd like to call the meeting to order, please. Roll call.
Mayor Yanisch.
Here.
Councilmember Anderson.
Here.
Christensen.
Here.
Ammon.
Here.
Nelson.
Here.
Johnson.
Here.
Dacken.
Here.
Fagerly.
Here.
DeBlick.
Here.
Nine present, zero absent.
Would you all please stand as we say the pledge of allegiance? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Do we have any proposed additions or deletions to the agenda? Councilman Anderson.
I have a matter I'd like to discuss under new business, please.
Do I hear a motion to approve the consent items as written?
So moved.
So seconded.
We have a second and a... A motion and a second to approve the consent items as written. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed say no. That motion carries. Scheduled hearings. Bruce Peterson, introduce someone that we need to know.
This is the public hearing for the tax abatement request by Oil Air Products and also by the owners of the Donnerite property on East Highway 12. Oil Air Products is a producer of hoses and fittings for fluid power equipment, and they're proposing to open a facility in Wilmer. A portion of the Donner building on East Highway 12 would be leased by the company to conduct their business. To offset some of the increased real estate taxes resulting from the move, a partial tax abatement has been requested, and the abatement has been discussed in the past and is detailed in the resolution that is available to the council for review. The abatement would be made available to the company as a pass-through from the property owner, William Donner. The documents are being drafted in both the name of William and Deborah Donner, the property owner, as well as Oil Air Products, which is named in the agreement as the recipient. The abatement request meets the requirements of the city of Wilmer tax abatement policy that were adopted in June of 2013. The abatement would yield approximately $23,000 for the company over an eight-year period. It's a recommendation of staff that the council adopt a resolution granting the tax abatement and approving the developer agreement for the Donner Oil Air Products tax abatement.
At this point, we will open the public hearing and see if there are any comments from the public. If not, I will close the public hearing. Go ahead. Sure, by your means.
Good evening, everybody. Merry Christmas. This subject I'd like to bring up about what I think are three...
Your name, Bud.
Oh, sorry. Bob Enos, 905 Trot Avenue Southwest. Three issues strike me as worth noting about this tax abatement. One has to do with the findings for the abatement as published in the last minutes of the meeting. The second has to do with the presumed increase or preservation of the tax base. The third has to do with what's called, let's see, redeveloping or renewing blighted areas. So I gather there are four or five litmus tests that an abatement approval needs to meet in order to sail on by. Those three sort of stuck out to me, and I'll tell you why. With respect to the... With these findings, in terms of increase or preservation of tax base... Correct me if I'm wrong, but the Donner family that already owns that building has been paying, I think according to the county assessor's website, about $18,000 a year in taxes. That bill... Well, that's what the county assessor's website says, in total. My point being that the tax bill, as a result of this abatement, won't go up or won't go down, so if anything, the tax revenue coming off this abatement goes down. So with respect to meeting that first criteria of preserving or increasing a tax base, one could make the argument that the tax base, or at least the tax revenue aspect of it, is decreasing. With respect to the renewal of blighted areas... Now, I know where that building is, and I think their neighbors would probably be rather surprised to learn that they live in a blighted area. So, insofar as those criteria have not been met, I would say the abatement criteria have not been met. Now, last thing, and I'll make this quick. In doing a little due diligence to find out where this company had come from, evidently it's been around quite a long time, and this year, according to their website, they just relocated their main production and corporate facility from a little town, western suburb called Hamilton, Minnesota, into Plymouth, where they have acquired a 62,000-square-foot manufacturing facility. That doesn't sound like a company on hard times to me. It also doesn't sound like a company whose strategic focus is going to result in them enlarging their presence in Wilmer. It sounds like they've cast their lot for the Twin Cities. So as I say, it sort of begs the question. I got in touch today with a department head in Plymouth because I was curious to know whether Plymouth extended any abatements or tax incentive financing or anything of the measure to lure this company into Plymouth. The fellow said, "No, no TIF financing for these guys." I said, "Well, how about a tax abatement? That's a pretty big facility." He said, "Duh, we don't do tax abatements." Really? And why would that be? You grant one, they're all going to show up for a tax abatement. That's a slippery slope. It's a no-go. We just don't do it. Well, how do you decide... Now I'm having a roll with this guy. How do you decide how and when you're going to approach TIF financing for a business? Do you have a policy for that? Steve, you have a policy? No, we don't have a policy. This is a one-off deal, case by case. Our city council takes an interest in seeing what prospects can come to town. If they see something that interests them, they tell us to do the homework, but we're not business people. If it's a blighted area that needs a renewal of housing, we hire some engineers, industrial and structural engineers, to tell us if this area is worth saving. If it's a business prospect, we're not business people, we're government people. We hire business consultants that know business, know valuations, know marketing, know prospects, so we know if we're throwing money into a black hole or if something's going to have legs, go somewhere in the future. This was a good reality check for me, folks. Pay attention.
Thank you. Are there any other questions or comments in the public hearing? If not, I will... Go ahead. Go ahead.
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, staff, members of the audience, cable TV audience. I've learned some time ago that if you're in an argument and you don't have really good facts, you obfuscate the issue, try and confuse people and confuse the issues. If you've got a strong case, Mr. Scott, you end up going for the jugular right away. So rather than confuse the issues, let's just go straight for the jugular of this issue. There's no way that we're going to make an argument that this company needs financial assistance. Matter of fact, it's been the goal and policy of the Economic Development Commission to attract companies that don't need financial assistance. Most of you have heard me say before that Bruce and I and Ken Warner can go out over the course of the next week and find half a dozen companies that desperately need financial assistance. The next December, we'll be going, "Oh, woe is us, where did our money go?" because most of them, injection of cash is only that, a temporary injection of cash. The city of Wilmer tax abatement policy clearly indicates that we do not try and meet every criteria of the tax abatement policy, but it clearly indicates in 3E to retain local jobs, increase the local job base, and provide diversity in the job base. This community in this county has grown to be one of the strongest metropolitan counties in all of America by the fact that we've grown our job base, and by that, we've grown our tax base. In this county, in the last decade, coincidentally, about the same time the EDC has been in existence, we've grown 1,000 jobs. Our income base in Kan-de-Oha County has went from $1.5 billion to $2.5 billion in that same period of time, indicating that it's the growth of jobs as much as any other factor that causes resilient growth in Kan-de-Oha County. Now, there's the old phrase that a rising tide lifts all ships. Well, I could tell you, as the job base has grown, as the dollar amounts and monies available in Kan-de-Oha County have become more and more prevalent, we've been able to further grow the business community, and Wilmer's now over a $500 million sales tax economy, putting us in a league where we now can attract even more businesses and more diverse businesses, some which we all hear about almost every week. So I can tell you, we're talking about a good, quality, and strong company here. What we do in Minneapolis-St. Paul in terms of tax abatement or TIF is totally different than what we do in rural Minnesota. Jobs and people just come to them. They don't need to do most of the things that we do here, but we get to decide, not only tonight, but almost every council meeting night, we get to decide whether we're going to be a welcoming area for new business growth and whether we're going to hold our hands out. Now, when we talk about this particular tax abatement, if you combine the city and county tax abatement together, you do not equal $10,000. If you take one of the jobs, one of the lowest-paid jobs that they have in this company, that we seem to worry about their wages, that are more than our business subsidy policy allows, by the way, if you take the lowest-paid jobs, it is three times for getting the Department of Employment and Economic Development multiplier effect that they have on salary. The salary alone for one of the jobs, the lowest-paying jobs, is over three times what our combined tax abatement is being asked for. So I can tell you, if you want to grow this city, and if you want to grow this county, you will do it through many ways, but first of all, it's going to be making ourselves inviting for the growth of companies just like this one, the ones that had the nerve and the vision to see that they wanted to be next to our agribusiness manufacturers out in this area, and that it made perfect sense for them to do that. So, Mr. Mayor and members of the council, I urge you to pass this tax abatement. The president of the company sits to my immediate left, your immediate right, and has come down on these icy roads to answer any questions that you might have about his country... Company. His country, too. But... So don't be... Don't let people cloud the issues and obfuscate the issues. Go right to the heart of the matter, and it's all about creating jobs. And we've had some emails float around, especially over the weekend. Make your own decisions what you wish to choose to do on that. But we've got Mr. Fenster, the Realtor, involved. We've got Roger, the president of the company. Your development director and I have done what we feel is our due diligence. And, Mr. Chair, before I sit down, is there any questions that you or the council may
Any questions? Right now, it's still in the audience's hands as far as the hearing goes, and then I'll turn it over to the council.
Well, I promise to be even more pleasant if asked questions.
Do we have any questions? Does anybody in the audience have any questions for our EDC chairperson? Thank you, Steve. Close the public hearing to the audience, and we'll open it to the council.
Mr. Mayor, I move to deny.
We have a motion to deny the... Do I hear any seconds to that, or it dies?
Mr. Mayor, I move to approve.
Second.
The motion has been made and seconded to approve the plan as described, the doctor of the loose and granting the tax payment and approving the development agreement, developer agreement. All those in favor say aye.
There might be some...
Is that a discussion?
Discussion first, Mr. Mayor, and then roll.
Okay. Is there a discussion? Councilman Christensen?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and I do have a couple of questions for you, Steve. First one being, is this the first time we've asked for tax abatement for subsidizing a renter?
The first time in Wilmer, at least in my tenure, that would be the case. I'm not fond of the description, but it is a renter with the tax abatement going first to the property owner, and then by the contract and the lease, 100% of the tax abatement does carry forth to the lessor. In fact, in commercial... And I'll be quick, I have no intention to lecture anybody. In commercial leases, you have so many dollars per square foot, then you typically have common area charges, and then typically you also have what's called triple net. Triple net standing for that the lessor pays the taxes, the insurance on the property, and the utilities. In this particular case, a very standard matter in commercial real estate, that portion of the lessor paying the taxes would be reduced by this factor. And remember, council members, is the property taxes, the company was paying in their previous location, or actually their present location, is less than a third of what the combined Wilmer and Kan-de-Oha County taxes are. And as a good business, I cannot, and they have not tried to make a case that they can't afford it, but as a good business, they're just looking for a little equalization of the taxes for the period of time of up to eight years.
So the tax abatement getting to the renter is in the lease agreement?
Correct.
It states in there... I did read it, something to the effect that they will be responsible for the percentage of that building, property taxes.
Correct.
And therefore, the abatement will come off of that amount only.
Correct.
Right? Okay.
And only... I'm sorry, Councilmember Christensen, only for the period of... If, let's say, after three years, they were to move, the abatement comes to an end at that time.
I understand it's a three-year lease with that landlord.
Correct.
And the abatement is for eight years.
Correct.
For a total cost of the city of about $22,000. However, after three years, if they decide to move to another building in our community or whatever, the lease is up, the tax abatement stops?
Yes, sir.
That meeting. How about oversight on the... As far as them meeting any... Do we have any levels of achievement we have for them to meet as far as more jobs?
We would build into the development agreement the nine jobs that they've have at this time. There has been the suggestion that the company may be considering up to as many as four more jobs, but no promises have been made nor extracted by local staff at this time.
Okay, so there is no level of achievement that they have to meet?
They would have to meet the nine jobs that they suggested.
Strictly the nine jobs. Yes. And then again, the oversight of them meeting those nine jobs, who oversees that? Is it our staff, or how do we know after two years that this has been met, or one year?
There would be an annual review of the jobs created.
Okay. How about timing of bringing the facility up to their standards where they're going to be in production? Is there something in there as far as timing, when they have to have this thing up and running? Because if we're going to bait the taxes for 15, you know, I'm assuming they're going to be in business out there. I understand that there has to be some upgrading or renovations or walls built or whatever.
Councilmember Christensen, I may be quickly corrected by the company president or Doug Fenster, but I believe it is the company's goal to be in there and operating as soon after the first of the year as possible.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Mr. Peterson, do you have a...
Yeah, I'd like to add that the development agreement specifically requires that all of the improvements specified by the company have to be completed by January 1, 2016, and it's certainly my understanding that they would be completed well in advance of that time to enable the company to operate in there as soon as they can.
Thank you. Any further comments from the council? Councilman Ammon?
No, thank you. I just want to make it clear that I encourage everybody to come to this town and build their plant. I wish you the most success. However this decision goes down, I think we know how it's going to go, but I just want to voice some of my concerns that I've heard from the constituents, and that is the abatement of taxes based on the $12 an hour job and the job creation and what the city of Wilmer taxpayers are going to have to do without since you won't be paying your full share of taxes. When it comes down to the three jobs created over three years, I had many examples, some very, very, very successful business people who are not retired in this community who have said that... Oh, I can name you 10 or 15 people that have done this without any abatement whatsoever, and they did it off their sweat and brown, have been part of this community for years, and eventually they expanded in this community. And, you know, you can't help but admire people like that that did it on their own. And I wish that it was possible to do that, but it seems like the new terms on economic development is we have to give away the future tax indebtedness to a company and forgive them that to create a job. And I guess I don't philosophically understand that. I feel that if you want to make the money, you want to make the money, you want to make the profit, you're going to do it with employees. Employees are necessary part of your operations. And I'm not... I'm speaking specifically for myself, from what I am as a small business person and how other people have struggled to make a living. But mainly, it's been all the people that I've talked to and emails, letters I've gotten just don't support this concept. If you were the owner of the building, if you had owned the building or built a new pole barn in Industrial Park, that'd be a completely different matter, but the ownership issue here is in question. And it's not to insult your integrity or be mean-spirited to you. Again, I appreciate the fact that you're an entrepreneur and you're willing to make a product that the people can use, and for that I commend you. I just cannot support this one particular thing, but I do have a few questions. Who and when negotiated this, when this negotiation process started? Who can answer that question? When did this get started, and who started it?
Mr. Mayor and Mr. Ammon, members of the council, I became involved in late November. I would have to ask, I think Mr. Fenster was involved with conversations with the Oil Air people well before that, but my personal involvement was in late November.
And Steve, has there been any... You gave us some information here based on the tax abatement, but also for the improvements that were going to be done to the existing building. How is, you know, buying a forklift and putting in some new walls and electrical going to benefit Mr., you know, Oil Air? And after that agreement, after that five- or three-year agreement is up, let's hope after, let's say, three years, that he might expand in Industrial Park, and he might be willing to create more jobs there, too, or the company willing to create more jobs. The valuation of that building is going to go up due to the improvements, correct?
Mr. Mayor and Mr. Councilmember Ammon, I can make no allegations that the value of the building is going to go up substantially due to the investment of the company. The investment was put together as an example of the cash outlay that the company was making as they were coming to town. Some of it in improvements for their use in the building, but it's speculative in my mind whether those improvements would increase the tax base of the building. Mr. Ammon, mayor, members of the council, my only sell that I can have is the increase in the number of jobs. And I've heard many times, as we've game-planned for Wilmer's future, in conversations that we've had with the EDC and other organizations, that an increase in the industrial base and the manufacturing base would be highly desirable. Now, this is a light manufacturing company, I know that, but it is an example of the community making itself receptive to a manufacturing company, and I believe you're absolutely right. We've got many builders of this community that never asked for tax abatement or tax increment financing or anything. But the world is largely changed, and very few development projects of any substance now seem to happen without some type of subsidy.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just getting back to the question, as far as the improvements to the building, the valuation is going to go up, and since we're passing through the money savings to Oil and Air Products, Oil and Air Products as a business can write off all those and depreciate off for tax purposes, all those improvements to the building. But in the end, after 10 years, the building will be improved, and the improvements will be benefiting the owner of the building, which is Mr. Donner, Bill Donner. So we are going to forgive taxes to... After 10 years, he's going to have a better, improved building with a loading ramp and loading doors and office spaces at the expense of the taxpayers. You see where I'm going with this? It's like you have to throw those things into the return on the investment, too. We're not... We're forgiving the taxes, we're doing without. Somehow in the budget, we're going to have to deal without that loss of revenue. And with that, the business gets the tax break, it gets the write-off, and we give an improved building at no cost to the owner of the property. It doesn't look great. If it was a... Oil Air Products owned the building, it would be a little different twist. Right now, I just see it as subsidized rent, and I don't agree with it.
It's very difficult to argue with you. In fact, I don't think I make any money by me arguing with any of my bosses. What I will harbor, though, I will give you perhaps a slightly different way to consider the way that our economy can grow from this. The nine initial jobs, and then because I'm a simplistic-type person, instead of hiring four more people, let's just say they do hire one to make it an even 10. If you look at what the jobs pay and what they historically have paid, the average of those 10 jobs will be at least $35,000 a year, at least. Okay? If you use... And this isn't the Steve Rendquist or the Ken Warner bounce factors, this is the Department of Employment and Economic Development multipliers. And we've all heard figures as high as seven. I'm using the lowest figure they issue, and that's three. They figure on the effect of the economy, it's three. So if you take 10 times $35,000 a year, that's $350,000. And if you take that times three, that's a... And if you take, if you take that times three, that's $1,050,000 a year. So for, so for 10 years, we create well over $10 million in economic activity in Wilmer, and our total investment is somewhere around $80,000. Folks, I think that's money very well spent, and I can defend that figures going just as far as anybody wants to take it or debate it. And yes, it's true, Mr., you know, Mr. Donner, I don't think he looks at himself as a, as a landlord. I think he's a business person, would rather be using that money to, or that building to have jobs in it and creating it, but he's consolidating in the northern part of the county. I think this is just an excellent opportunity for us. I cannot argue with you that there'll be some write-offs in there for Mr. Donner or for Oil Air and, and that there won't be. Heck, I hope everybody makes all kinds of money, because if they do, then we do. And, and that's how I see it. That's how I think we grow our, our economy and we grow our, our community. So not to argue with you, just the other side of the coin.
Thanks, Steve.
Mr. Peterson?
Mayor Yanis, members of the council, just a couple, I'm sorry, turn the mic. Mayor Yanis, members of the council, just a couple of quick points. Mr. Omen's talk about the investment in the facility, increasing the value is absolutely true, and that's an investment and an increase in value that will stay with that property and be on the city's tax rolls long after the tax abatement has run its course. Just as an interesting aside, this morning I ran some quick numbers on the median value home in the city of Wilmer, the out-of-pocket impact per year from a tax standpoint for that property is 35 cents.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just another quick question, I just came to my mind, some of the emails we got this weekend. Steve, the competition aspect of it, are they strictly a wholesaler or is they retail?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, Councilmember Christensen, members of the council. The company, in their production of their hydraulic, hydraulic lines and their pneumatic lines, sells wholesale. And there are other locations they sell this product wholesale. We had a, we had a business person in the area, and I'm sure there's more than one that sells some of the products retail, express a concern. I've got to admit, and I was held accountable late this afternoon, too late for me to talk to him individually, but I, I did not personally talk with that, with that business person. I'm, I'm, I understand that Mr. Fenster did, but quite frankly, should have been my obligation to, to talk to him, just to clear his mind, and, and I did not. But I don't believe, and we don't believe, that there'll be, they're, they're, they're moving here, you know, we have a large agro business manufacturer in Benson. We've got a large one, although not that large, but a large one here in Wilmer. We've got another one that seems to be growing every time we turn around, just in, just here in Wilmer. We've got some people in the nearby surrounding communities still in Kanawha County that could be useful, this could be useful too. I don't believe that there'll be competition on the, on the retail end.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I guess I don't know if I should direct this to Bruce or you, Steve, but reading over the agreement that has been drafted to implement this process, or this, this tax abatement that's an issue here tonight, there's numerous, well, makes numerous references to the lease between the Oil Air and Mr. Donner, the owner of the building, and there's numerous references to the project plans. We didn't receive, at least I didn't get any, either of those documents, and haven't read them. And I came across that when I read through this stuff last night, rather late, it was the only time I could get to it, but I spent, you know, read the whole thing, actually read it over more than once. But those documents, the terms of those documents are incorporated by reference into the tax abatement agreement, and therefore I think they're quite germane to the whole deal. And I can't tell from reading this, there's a general outline of certain improvements that Oil Air Products intends to make to the building, but I can't really tell the substance of them, not seeing if there are any, if there are in fact project plans. Have you seen those or do you have those or?
Mr. Fenster, first of all, Mayor, Councilmember Johnson, thank you for the questions. Excellent question. Mr. Fenster has shown me his copy of the project plans. With absolute and complete respect for the, for the council and the process in the tax abatement, Councilmember Johnson, at least in my mind, we were only trying to use the abatement as a tool to stimulate economic development and job growth. And yes, it's true, they're investing some money in the building, which to include a forklift, which is very transportable, but it's an investment they're making, interior loading ramps, some other, some electrical changes. The layout of the building was largely the, how the company would lay it out for their utilization of the building, and it really wouldn't affect the, the property taxes, but it, it, it does show a rather professional approach to traffic flow management in their, in their company. Councilmember Johnson and members of the council, as I looked at the tax abatement guide, I couldn't, I couldn't claim removal of slum or blight. I couldn't claim many of the things that we offer, but you want to remember when we put these things down in our, in our guides, we list numerous things that might make a tax abatement salient and might make it something that we would consider. The, maybe, maybe I'm too strong of a proponent of job growth, but the only thing that I was pursuing this, this tax abatement on was to create good, good job growth in our community. And I know nine jobs isn't a huge number of jobs, but we, we would all mourn the loss of a company with nine jobs. So I, I, I believe it's worth our effort to grow, and, and I make no allegations that, that perhaps my, my legal background being only that of a layperson and yours is certainly much more accomplished, perhaps we should have given the complete lease to the, to the council members. But all we were trying to show is that there was a dollar-for-dollar pass-through of the abatement off the lease amount, and that's all we were trying to show. Perhaps we should have given the entire lease to the, to the council.
Mr. Peterson?
Mayor Yanis, members of the council, let me add a little bit to that. The lease agreement was not included with the developer agreement simply because it is such a minor part of the process. Our only concern with the lease agreement is to see to it that the owner of the property is passing the abatement through to the recipient or the company Oil Air. With regard to the building plans or the project plans, those become an attachment by virtue of their submittal to our building department at such time, and it would be up to us as staff in that process to make sure that the building plans and the improvements that get made are indeed as specified in the developer agreement. So they are, those two references are put in the agreement simply for that, for reference, and in this particular case, I do not believe play a substantial role in whether or not the abatement should be approved or not, simply because as Mr. Renquist has stated, we're looking at it from a job standpoint, and that's the premise that the project was submitted and argued on.
Thank you. Any further discussion, Councilman?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. You know, we have these discussions and we talk about this and we're doing our due diligence, but, but I think sometimes we forget to say thank you to the companies that are, that are considering coming to our community and, and enduring this sort of a thing. And all we're doing is trying to, to get, get answers to some questions that we may have. And, but we really do appreciate the fact that you're considering our community. I don't know how the vote will come out. I hope it's positive, but again, we, we want to thank Oil Air Products for considering coming to our community, and, and we welcome everyone to come in and, and challenge us with, with these sort of opportunities where we can try to grow our economy. So.
Thank you. Are there any further comments?
Just one other comment, Mr. Mayor, for me. It isn't just the city of Wilmer tax abatement that's being approved here. I understand the county is going to, has approved it and voted on it, and it's all contingent on us, us accepting this portion of the agreement that's before us tonight, or is content, them approving it would be contingent on us approving our issue tonight. I'd just like to make it known that it isn't just 35 cents, as Bruce alluded to. Now, as a county taxpayer and a resident of the city of Wilmer, we're paying twice, or almost twice, because we're going to be paying the county share and the city's going to be paying the city's share again. And it's an issue of can we afford it? And I, I personally don't think we can. Maybe we cannot, but I think the, whether or not the city can afford it should be the issue of can this product be produced by this manufacturer in our community based on the resources that we have that are reasonable and fair, property taxes that are fair, distribution, roads improvements, traffic, his, his future or their future expansion needs, and hopefully to make them profitable. I guess the simple question is, if this was not given to Oil Air Products or to Donnerite to pass through, would this facility still be, would they be bringing three more jobs to Wilmer? That's the question. And I hate to be held hostage, I would rather be receptive to working with them and, and helping them eventually in the Industrial Park, but in this particular case, again, I'm repeating myself, but I just, again, I appreciate the fact you're considering, but I can't support this. Thank you.
Any further discussion, Councilman DeBlick?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Appreciate your comments, Mr. Omen, but I think the question should also be asked of what would happen if this company did not come to the community? What would we lose? We would lose jobs, we would lose growth, and bringing new companies into this city and area helped develop the area and help us grow and expand our economy here, so.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Councilman Johnson?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just have one other observation, Bruce, that you, as I understand it, the staff will be measuring or checking on the progress of these items that we expect to occur that are covered in the agreement, including later audits and of whatever, you know, whatever magnitude or is necessary. You're nodding yes, I presume that's a, a yes, you mean?
This particular tax abatement is so low that it doesn't even qualify statutorily as a business subsidy, so they don't have to file the annual reports with the state of Minnesota. Every March, we still go back to every business that we have a TIF program with, an abatement, any type of activity that's, I guess for lack of a better term, is a business subsidy, whether the state defines it as such or not, we do the accounting and we do the record-keeping for them. If they do have, if they do qualify as a business subsidy under Minnesota statute, we have to file reports with the state of Minnesota, so the companies have to provide us with the data. Gene Spalding and I traditionally put those reports together and submit to the state. So for every one of these that do have qualifications or parameters within the agreements, we do check them on an annual basis and make sure that those parameters are obtained.
My only concern is I read in the paper lately, a little too often, about public monies that seem to be used for improper purposes other than what they were intended for. This one, of course, is quite different than some of those, but it's still public money, and that's my concern that we, because our, our tax abatement policy does contain a provision for, for auditing and to make sure that things happen the way that they were intended to happen, and that's my concern about public money. I don't have any reason to doubt the integrity of Oil Air Products or Mr. Donner. I don't even know much about any of the individuals involved here in this process, but, and I'd like to see nine more jobs in town, like everybody else, but I just, I just want to make sure that we're on top of this. And I like to, I'm a little bit over diligent maybe in wanting to see all the documents. That's, and I'm, and I'm a little disappointed that I didn't see those. I don't, you know, I want to see them because they, they're incorporated by reference in the agreement, so they do become part of the legal contract that we're talking about here, so.
That is true. We do not have the final plans, and those are typically not generated until the time of construction, so I'm not, I, I think their inclusion by reference is historically symbolic, but I certainly respect and understand that, you know, you view them as part of the process for due diligence. You have the assurance of staff that we do review all of these documents and we do review performance very stringently on an annual basis.
Well, I know from the conversation here and some exchange of emails with Mr. Renquist that we did miss the possible element of there being a competitive business in town already that did this. I think that's been investigated and is not a problem, but it was missed, it wasn't presented as a problem to the committee, so hence, hence my concerns. Thank you.
Sure, you may.
Mayor Yanis, councilmembers?
Did it close public hearing?
Yes, the public hearing has been closed.
Okay, I'm sorry.
I cannot speak.
Mr. Mayor?
Go ahead.
I think it's at your discretion, or is there a state statute that says, covers it?
There's no state statute, it is at the chair of the meeting's discretion, so it would be up to the mayor.
So it's up to the mayor. If you want to have him speak, he can speak.
Speak, please.
My name is Donald Haug. I reside at 2670 Fairway Drive Northeast, and we have the John Deere dealership in town. My concern would be, and that is the retail side of the business. We have substantial investment in building hose for the YAG market. It would not just necessarily be our business, but I see that as being a competitive business within, say, the Arnold's Company. CEDNT is another one that builds hydraulic hose. To have a business such as this in town that we could possibly buy wholesale from and they could be competitive with our supplier would be to our benefit. But I would have concern that it could significantly impact our retail side of the business. Thank you.
Thank you. Do you see any further discussion among the council? Councilman Christensen?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. He brings up a, an interesting aspect of this. Could I ask, ask you, Butch or Don, how, how would it impact your retail business? I mean, how would it do it if they say they're strictly wholesale? How could this impact your business?
If they were wholesale, would not, would not have any impact. But retail-wise, if they had a retail outlet where our farmer customers could go to them and have them build the hoses, we build hoses all the time. Our customers come in and we build hoses for the machines that we have, plus also a lot of industrial customers as well. So it could have impact, or it would have impact on the retail side of our business.
If they sold retail?
If they sold retail, that's correct.
So maybe we need some kind of...
So maybe we need some kind of insurance that is strictly going to be to wholesale, or is that in the lease agreement? Or, no, that wouldn't be the lease agreement.
I just make that comment from the standpoint of I see how it could impact us. We sell a lot of hose. We have all the fittings. We sell a lot of hydraulic hose, air conditioning hoses, and I know that the Arnold's Companies, which are the case, IH Dealer in town, they have the same type of service for their customers. CDNT has always been a supplier of hydraulic hose and fittings, and I see them as being also impacted if it has a retail outlet.
But you don't, your company doesn't sell to like Bueller or?
No.
No?
No.
None of the manufacturers?
From the wholesale side, it might be to our benefit, because maybe we could buy from them for less money than the supplier that we're using. Could be to our benefit to have them as a wholesale supplier in town.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Mayor?
Go ahead.
Mr. Haug, come back here. Yes? So you have a plant in Litchfield, or Implement Dealer?
Yes.
They're in Litchfield right now. Do you buy anything from them now?
No.
Okay. Did you know they were in Litchfield?
No.
Okay. So there must not be any competition right now, then?
I don't know if they have a retail.
Do you have a retail outlet?
No.
Okay.
Thanks.
Any further comments or questions? Do we have a motion on the table, I think?
Resolution's ready.
Resolution. Let's start with a resolution.
Roll call?
Roll call.
Councilmember Anderson.
Aye.
Christiansen.
Aye.
Amon.
No.
Nelson.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Dawkin.
Aye.
Fagerly.
Aye.
DeBleek.
Aye.
Seven ayes, one nay.
That carries. Thank you very much. Do we have a speaker for open forum?
We may have two, as a repeater. We will start with Mr. Bob Score. Oh, I'm getting a hand signal for another one also, sir.
Okay. Bob Score, 617 Southwest 14th Street. I want to talk a little bit on substation land here. Of course, this is now, again, my opinion, just like everybody else had one tonight, I have one here again. Anyway, let's get real here. Another substation is no guarantee that will never lose power. If the power grid provider goes down, then what? How do we protect 4,600 miles of transmission line, 1,600-plus steel towers from a tornado or any act of God, which includes ice storms, high winds, lightning strikes, animals and equipment, cars hitting power line poles, et cetera? When the power goes out, it's on a priority basis, and residents come last. That is just a fact of life. How safe is the area around a high-voltage substation? EMFs, electromagnetic fields, are the strongest, closest to the power sources. There are two types of EMFs: non-ionizing, which is a low-level radiation, which is generally perceived as harmless to humans; ionizing, which is high-level radiation, which has a potential for cellular and DNA damage. The National Institute of Environmental Health Services recommends continued education on practicing ways of reducing exposures to EMFs. How do we protect just one link in this long chain? The information I just read came from the Great River Energy webpage. Years ago, my sister worked for Arabian American Oil Company in Saudi Arabia. She lived on a American compound built by Aramco for the American and non-Saudi people working there. She lived on this compound for seven years, which provided security, housing, education. Maybe Hormel and other poultry producers should use this 40-acre site to build a facility to house and educate their workers while they are transitioning to the American way of life. They could redo the buildings and make a nice complex for their employees to enjoy and maybe feel more at home. The Hormel Foundation just gave Austin, Minnesota, $3.2 million to buy the city's aging mall that was behind on property taxes and the mall's parking lot in need of major repairs. I would think that Hormel could spend some money on their employees to assimilate to our culture and not leave that task to our county and city when it's their responsibility. Thank you.
Thank you. Do we have any others?
Mr. Butch Haug?
Really, I probably need to again state my name is Donald Haug. Everybody kind of knows me as Butch, I guess. Mr. Mayor, council members, I'm really here probably to talk to you in regard to the proposed study that you folks have authorized to be done for the Highway 12 project, and after, if it would be possible, after you have reviewed that particular plan, if I could visit with you a few minutes after that, if that would be possible.
Thank you. Are we covered?
Mr. Bob Ennis is waving his hand frantically, if you will allow him.
Sure.
Thank you. Bob Ennis, 905 Trout Avenue, Southwest. You've probably seen some notes I've sent around the last few days, so this ought to be fairly short and fairly sweet. I don't know very much about the rationale behind the substation project. Let's just, for the sake of this discussion, presume that it's needed. I think that the negotiations for this property have probably dragged on quite long enough. As I read Section 4.05 from the city charter specifically turning to Subdivision 2, which delineates the powers and duties of the commission, Part F gives the commission the right to exercise the power of eminent domain. This seems like a fairly cut-and-dry case to me. The notion that this land serves a greater public good would seem to be without dispute. The company hasn't been using this land for years. There's some question as to just how marketable it is to farmers anyway. If it had been marketable, one would think that good businessmen would have sold it by now if they didn't need it, but the land is sitting there. So both parties have agreed on a per-acre price of somewhere around $7,000. The deal that's on the table involves, I gather, 48 acres, most of which is not needed by the utility commission. Total deal comes in at about $350,000. Curtain A. Curtain B. Condemn the land that you need, just the 12 acres, by begin eminent domain proceedings. You've already agreed on a $7,000-per-acre price. Now you're looking at a total value of $85,000 to the rate users. Eighty-five, 350. The city doesn't have to be in the real estate business. Hire a real estate person, a broker, to try to sell that farmland, so there's another hidden cost when you have to pay that commission. On top of this, we've seen grain prices plummet so far this year. They stand to plummet a lot worse after the grain markets digest this most recent plunge in oil prices, when ethanol won't be able to pay for the, won't be able to have the demand on grain it's had thus far. We're buying at the top of the market, selling on the bottom. By the time we get done with this transaction, it'll cost us a half a million dollars, and we haven't even put a shovel in the ground yet. Eminent domain, $85,000. Get the deal done and be done with it. Thanks.
Thank you. Is there anyone else to speak at open forum?
No. Mr. Rogers is for the presentation, so we're good.
Okay. The recognition of the mayor.
I hope we don't get feedback. This is going to be an honor and a duty for me to present a plaque to the mayor for his outstanding service over the last four years. Why don't you stand up? Mayor Yanish was elected mayor in 2010 and took office in 2011. He came in with a flourish, as he and his team worked diligently to unseat a long-term Wilmer mayor. Frank was really proud of his team, and he was very quick to say that he won every ward and every precinct in every ward. So that is quite a testament to his win in the election. And Frank was so diligent and so concerned about being a good mayor that shortly after he took office, he actually hired another person to help he and his wife, Lorna, run the business so that Frank could spend time visiting with constituents. And I'll tell you this, I was in that office many times, or in the shop, and oftentimes that place was full, and I'm not sure they were all there buying tires or if they were waiting to see Frank, but he took the job very, very seriously. One of Frank's first major accomplishments, as he became mayor, was to get the land release on the airport property, and in so doing, it allowed us to expand our industrial park so that we can get more businesses out in that area. Another interesting tidbit is, over the last four years, property or new construction has exceeded $130 million in the last four years, and this is a real testament to everybody in the community, and it's a very positive thing that we've increased our tax base. Not all of that is taxable property, certainly, but a lot of it is, and it's provided a lot of good construction jobs during that time period. As Frank served in office, he brought a sense of conservative values to the position. And you know, some of the things that really stand out for me, as I reflect on his term, are, number one, his dedication to the job. Frank was very, very dedicated, and he has a willingness to listen to both sides of all of the issues, and he also is willing to ask the hard questions, and he has a true commitment to making Wilmer a better place to live and work. Mayor Yanish, on behalf of the city council, city staff, and all of the residents of the City of Wilmer, we thank you for your four years as mayor.
Thank you very much. Thank you. I would just like to say a few things. This is my final meeting, and I would like to say thank you to the people who overwhelmingly elected me to become mayor, to your mayor, to be your mayor. It has indeed been a great honor. My main focus to accomplish things I promised to the people who elected me, I was able to hold the, I was able to hold the rein in on spending and brought more transparency to my constituents. Say that three times real fast. These, however, the constituents' tax dollars that we are spending, and I feel they should be aware of how it is being spent. We were able to get a land release on the portion of the old airport, and we got a train quiet zone installed with more of both coming. There's more to come. Our city is in good shape financially. We have a good rating, boundary, high, bond rating. We became a yellow ribbon city, and we welcomed a new charter school at the Midwest campus, along with many other things too numerous to mention. As with mixed emotions, I leave you as your mayor, but I believe my work here is done. My hope is that the incoming mayor will continue along the path we have started. Again, I say a heartfelt thank you to the citizens of Wilmer for electing me the mayor, and may God bless all of you, and may God bless the City of Wilmer. Thank you, Eric.
The mayor's also given me the honor to say a few words about my fellow First Ward council member, Bruce DeBleek, who will be leaving office at the end of this year. Councilmember DeBleek, I got a few things to say about you. Can you imagine that? You know, one of the things about Bruce is, he started community service long before he was elected to the city council. He was appointed by Mayor Ferguson in 1981 to the Wilmer Utilities Commission. So, boy, there's a long history of time with the utilities there. He served in that capacity until 1986, and then Mayor Reynolds appointed him to the Rice Hospital Board in 1987, and he served there until he was elected in 1991. He was elected in 1990 and took office in 1991. While he's been on the city council, he's served as a liaison to the Utilities Commission for 22 of the 24 years that he's been on the council, and he's served as, for many years, as the chair of the Community Development Committee on the city council. Bruce was also involved in the creation and has served on the joint powers of the CATT organization, and he's especially proud, and he should be proud, of the work that he did on Allied Power. Allied Power was a consolidation of effort to create a better utility situation for the City of Wilmer, and their one big accomplishment was getting intel into town and getting good high-speed internet service through that organization. He's also been involved in not only the Vision 2040, but he was also involved in the Vision 2020 process. From my perspective, Bruce's accomplishments can probably best be summarized by his dedication to the job, his love of the community, and his dedication to the job being a councilman, and his willingness in making himself available to all of the residents of the city. Bruce is truly an outspoken champion and advocate for our city. His voice will be missed. However, I suspect that over time, we probably haven't heard the last of Bruce, and I would encourage him to stay involved in the community. So, Councilmember DeBleek, on behalf of the mayor, the city council, the staff, residents of Ward 1, and all of the residents of the City of Wilmer, we thank you.
Thank you, Mayor.
You can turn that off. Use this one. Mayor, council, members of the audience, members of the viewing public, this may well be my last opportunity that I have to address you, where I can take more than three minutes in the agenda. I see, looking up and down the table, there's a lot of gray hair here, a lot of experience, and would like to quote my good friend and colleague, Richard Halterman, who always used to say in this job, "Sometimes you feel like a fire hydrant at a dog convention." But seriously, first I would like to express my gratitude for the opportunities you have given me over the years to be part of the city, and my special thanks go to the opportunities of addressing you this evening. I'm incredibly thankful to have worked for Wilmer over these past years. It has been a time of great joy. It is not without some disappointment, but there is also a sense of relief as I depart. I have had numerous good years in the city council with many good and rewarding friendships. This evening, I come to you with a message of farewell, share some of my final thoughts with you. Together collectively, we have seen amazing things happen. Visions have been created, goals have been structured, and aspirations that started out as ideas more... as ideas more often than not became tangible realities. Our success is a testimony to each and everyone here. We have worked together, argued together, shared our problems, hopes together and established ourselves through not always, though not always in agreement. Tonight, I would like to play, pay tribute to your dedication, your commitment, your innovative approach and professionalism. I count myself most fortunate. I have come to see you all, not only as colleagues, but friends as well. People expect the council to find essential agreement on issues and wise resolution of which will better shape the future of the city. The council and the staff had for the most vital issues cooperated and served the city good and so have assured that the business of the city would go forward. But each proposal must be weighed in broader consideration and need to maintain balance in and among programs, balance among public and private and a balance between our requirements as a city. A balance between actions and good judgment. If there's lack of good judgment, you will eventually find imbalance and frustration. In the council, you must guard against the acquisition of unwarranted influence. The potential for the rise of misplaced power exists. We should not take nothing for granted. Only an alert and knowledgeable electorate can compel the proper meshing. We must avoid becoming a community of fear and hate and be instead a proud community of mutual trust and respect, a community where we can all be equals and where we may all prosper together. Another factor involves the element of time. As we look into our future, we must avoid the impulse to live only for today, pondering for our own convenience to the precious resources of tomorrow. We cannot mortgage the assets of our grandchildren without also risking the loss also of their heritage. So I thank you for the many opportunities you have given me for public service. In that service, I hope you find some things worthy. I hope that in the future, you will find ways to improve. Thank you for the happy memories that I will take with me and thank you for the opportunities that you were offered to me and thank you for the friendships forged over the years we have spent together. I am looking forward to the opportunities and challenges that await me. I hope that they are many and varied and that they force me out of my comfort zone. So as I become a private citizen, my official duty as this council end in a feeling of gratitude that we have been able to do so much together. At the same time, as I look back at my time here at this table, I see a time well spent and a time with few regrets. Thank you.[807.23][807.23](applause)
We have a presentation of a Highway 12 corridor study by Mr. Elliot Hendrickson. Bruce?
Mayor Yanish, members of the council, earlier this year, the city and the county and MINDOT partnered in an effort to create a future vision for the Highway 12 corridor through the city of Wilmer. The result of the process is a living document that will guide future land use and engineering decisions as well as activities all along that corridor. With us tonight to present the vision are Chris Moats from MINDOT and Bob Rogers from the consulting firm SEH and I would welcome them to inform the council of the results of the vision process.
Thank you.
Do that?
Sure.
Good evening, Mayor, council. Thank you for having us on the agenda this evening. Once again, I'm Chris Moats and I am the former interim planning director for MINDOT District Dayton, Wilmer and the project manager for this study. With me tonight, of course, is Bob Rogers, consultant from Short Elliot Hendrickson, SEH out of the Twin Cities. And also in the audience, I have Suzanne Karnowski, our newly appointed assistant district engineer for program delivery and our new planning director, Lindsay Knutson. I'll be real brief and then I'll hand it over to Bob, kind of repeating a little about what Bruce said. During the pre-construction phase of MINDOT's recently completed project on Highway 12, there was an awareness created and concern over the long-range vision in the Highway 12 corridor. This concern was raised prior to the start of the project and led to the development of the study framework and the hiring of SEH. MINDOT, the city of Wilmer and Candy Ojai County have partnered on this study both financially and in sharing technical resources. The corridor studies for the area from County Road 5 on the west through downtown and past the bypass to 45th Street Southeast. Its purpose is to look at past and existing conditions of both land use and transportation and determine using input from study participants and the best information available, what the vision should be for the corridor over the next 20 years and with the qualifier that there is no project associated with this particular study. It is a corridor vision. Bob?
Thanks, Chris. Mr. Mayor, members of the council, I'm going to try as quickly as I can to summarize the approximate one-year study that we did into about a 10-minute presentation here and leave plenty of time for you to ask questions and whatnot. And just building off of what Chris talked about, just a map of the corridor, again, starting on our east end from just outside the city limits near 45th Street all the way to County Road 5 on the other end. And we weren't just looking at transportation. We also were trying to marry this with land use decisions and policies in the future as well. So we call it a transportation corridor vision study for Highway 12, but it also affected land use adjacent to the corridor as well. So just real quick, just on the study, the process that we followed, this isn't real unique to this corridor study. This is a typical planning. You may do this for land use or other types of studies as well. But we did general data collection that started out the first couple of months of the study. We involved some stakeholders, being business owners, other agencies, folks like that to gather some of our information. We did some of our conceptual analysis and then also ultimately concluded with recommendations. I'm going to kind of touch on all of those as I move forward here in the presentation. So some of the things we looked at was the existing conditions and the data. This shows traffic volumes. I don't expect you to look at all these numbers, but there was some interesting trends on Highway 12 that I personally had not seen on a corridor study before that I'd worked on where you actually had some quite substantial changes in traffic volumes over time where things were at a level, they dropped, started to rebound. So that's not real common in highway corridor planning. Usually see that, you know, obviously traffic is growing, but with some changes in transportation corridors in this area, we actually saw some uniqueness to it. So at the bottom, we also did some forecasting just out to the year 2040 and we use those as we move forward into our conceptual analysis. So traffic volumes, we also looked at just general level traffic capacity. What should the roadway section be to accommodate the traffic that's out there in the future as well as today? Looked at that. I'm going to keep moving here quickly. Looked at access. As you all likely know driving the corridor, this corridor is filled with access points, way more than what would be recommended under MINDOT's access guidelines for a corridor such as this. We inventoried 114 various access points, whether they're business, residential or public streets. That's about 22 access points per mile. On a corridor like this, you would be not even a tenth of that probably would be what would be recommended under the guidelines. But, you know, that is the current condition and so we took that into consideration and how we could address that was also brought, you know, back later in the recommendations. We spent some time looking at issues. These two maps just show a whole array of issues and I don't know if you've had a chance to look at the report and read any of those, but we gathered issues a few different ways. Again, mentioned the stakeholder involvement. Maybe I'll skip to that slide real quick because I think that was important with our issue gathering. Having trouble with this little scroll here. Do I need to push the button or, oh, it's jumping on me. There we go. So we had a technical advisory team which was made up of staff from, again, the three project partners. So we met monthly with the city folks, county representatives and MINDOT. We also held some early focus group meetings, broke the corridor down into a few different sub-area groups, got great input from those. One I'd just like to really point out I thought was quite unique and great input was the emergency services, law enforcement. Those folks brought things to the table that we just don't see necessarily looking at a map or looking at numbers. They're out there daily, whether it's, you know, being, having a safe pull over on a traffic stop or responding to a call in a narrow bridge, creating a pinch point, you know, things like that that they were able to point out that we were able to take into consideration. We also formed a project advisory committee. They met a couple of times just during the study, list some of the members there and then also we kind of tried to share our information. I think you folks received maybe an update once or twice during the study, but then also with our website providing information. I'm going to go back real quick here just to one slide. So we started out early on and we created this corridor vision statement and I'm not going to read it, but you know, ultimately it got to, you know, trying to preserve and enhance the corridor for all the folks within Wilmer and, you know, even people that are passing through. I mean, Highway 12 is a regional corridor. It serves a local function, but it also serves a regional function. We tried to capture that in our vision. We created some study goals primarily focused around the highway and safety and mobility, also making connections with the transportation system to the local land use and future development and redevelopment in the area. We also had through our issues gathering quite a bit of input that was getting at the aesthetic character, the aesthetic appearance of the corridors. We looked at some street scape and had some goals that focused around that. There was also quite a bit of information brought forward from residents and all about pedestrians and bicyclists and the, you know, the limited features out there. But, you know, we looked at that, you know, found that there are some other opportunities within the community, maybe just right off of Highway 12, took that into consideration. And then ultimately, I think what, you know, one other thing we're looking at here is a collaborative process that involved these three jurisdictions. And as you move forward, like Chris had said, there's not a construction project right now that's proposed, but ultimately when you're talking about, you know, looking for non-traditional funds through whether it's grant programs and things like that, being able to show that you have a study that was done and agreed upon by multiple jurisdictions, it's going to serve you well and scoring well on those very competitive types of funding opportunities that are out there. I'm going to jump to, kind of, we then did the conceptual analysis process and looking at the traffic volumes, looking at the crashes, looking at everything that was involved there. We looked at an array of opportunities and changes that could be made along the corridor. We looked at four-lane options. We looked at modified two-lane options. We ultimately kind of settled back on more of a more continuous three-lane section through the corridor where you have a center left, you know, continuous left turn lane, with the exception of right downtown where you've got the divided four-lane section. It made no sense to go and try to retrofit and change that. That works, operates, you've got right-of-way. It seemed to make sense to leave that section alone. But within here, the recommendations, the three-lane, leaving the four-lane divided and then other spot improvements. And later on in my presentation, I've got all those listed and I don't plan to get through all those with you, but they're in there and if you got questions about specific ones, I'd be glad to answer them. One other thing was quite evident is again, the access, creating maybe an access overlay district that would be administered by the city and ultimately look at future land use and redevelopment opportunities and whether or not access could be maybe maintained off of a side street rather than Highway 12. Maybe access can be consolidated, maybe frontage-backage roads could be put in to remove access, things like that. And then also the last major recommendation there is again, getting at some of the aesthetic treatments and street scape, things that would build off of your downtown plan that you've already created. So some of the benefits with the, and findings of the three-lane with the center left turn lane is that, you know, for the most part, it serves traffic completely fine. A three-lane section has the capacity to serve what the forecast traffic volumes are out here. There was historically some talk about, well, should a four-lane be built? There's already some four-lane. And, you know, ultimately a four-lane is a system that can, you know, handle more traffic, yes, but is it needed? And is it, you know, really is the purpose there or is the desire there to have that? Because if you have that wider corridor, you obviously have, you know, more effects on the adjacent built environment. So the good news was that a three-lane section does have acceptable levels of service. No additional right-of-way is needed, no relocations would be required. We can accommodate some pedestrian and bicycle types of facilities right there on 12. We've got a minimum of six-foot shoulders in a lot of cases, can accommodate even a 10-foot shoulder. Access points generally remain unchanged except in areas where we identified maybe some modifications could be made, consolidations could be made. We removed the left-turning traffic. That's one of the biggest problems out there today is that you get left-turning traffic that disrupts the flow of traffic and people are passing on the shoulder. I'm sure we've all probably done it once or twice. You can get around, but it's probably not the safest thing and if the law enforcement guys see you, you might get to talk to them a little bit more. So you get them into their own lane, you don't disrupt that free flow of traffic, therefore better safety, better operations and mobility along the corridor. The narrower cross-section also provides the opportunity for some of those street scape type of improvements that could be incorporated as well as some drainage, stormwater elements that could be added. And then, you know, ultimately, this is more of a low-cost, high-benefit type of improvement. A four-lane section, obviously with right-of-way, additional construction costs would be substantially higher ultimately to implement. So we broke the corridor down into six segments and again, here's where we've got all the recommendations by segment and I don't want to get into every one of these details. Boy, it's touchy. So we had a western urbanizing segment from the far west and there's a list of kind of some key recommendations and things to move forward with. I think like Bruce said, this is a living document. This will be a tool for the city hopefully to use, to reflect upon if a development comes in, if a transportation improvement's going to be made in the area, what types of things can we pull and try to implement that were studied. So again, there were six segments. I don't know if there's any specific questions you got about those. I don't want to spend a lot of time on all of those, but just to get at it is, you know, some of them carry from one segment to the other. But, you know, for the most part, it's getting at maintaining an efficient transportation system and a safe transportation system. Some very specific improvements are identified and some more higher level, you know, seek opportunities for consolidating access, things like that. I mentioned the street scape and the aesthetics. We did conduct just a short, quick, little visual quality survey. There was some, again, people thought that, you know, we've got an opportunity on 12 here to create a gateway to the downtown and then in the downtown area, you've already done some assessing of what potential treatments could be done. And we weren't trying to replace those. We were just trying to build upon those and maybe also carry it out further from the immediate downtown. So we put together a few illustrative maps showing just, you know, a plan view of what could be added with some adjacent landscaping and various features. So here's right on the east side, west side of the downtown. Another option is if you were to limit some access to right-in, right-out, you could put a median, extend that through, create more of a boulevard situation, you know, add banners, add decorating, decorative lighting, some plantings, things of that nature to kind of improve the aesthetic appearance. We also created a few just renderings to show you the before and after of a three-lane section versus what's out there today. Unfortunately, when we took a few of our pictures, MINDOT was restriping the lane so we got all those orange cones, but we all deal with traffic and construction, so. But just to show you, again, some of the things that could be done with the three-lane section and, you know, out here by the convention center, my pointer's not working, you know, there's quite a bit of pedestrian traffic out in that area. Was talking with Mel Odens today from the county and Mel was surprised how many people he sees actually on the roadway. And in this area, actually, one of our recommendations is to put a trail on the south side, a 10-foot trail that would, you know, keep those folks off the roadway. And again, that's something that would connect to other city features. At Lakeland Drive, you've got a trail. It would connect over to that system as well. That's really it for the real brief summary. What we did ultimately is we created a conceptual vision map. It's just a series of 11-by-17s showing this three-lane section and some of the other improvements. We can pull up any given area if you've got a specific question. But, you know, ultimately, this will be used hopefully by MINDOT, by the city, by the county to plan for the future, to create that vision so that when, you know, I heard a lot about business, you know, pulling people and transportation's huge when you're looking at a new business opportunity. And if you're going to a community and you see, hey, it looks like they've got some traffic issues, they start asking staff about that. Staff pulls out a report and says, no, we got a plan. Might not be able to implement it today, but we got a plan to make this corridor safe, efficient for your users, for your employees and things like that. It's just another incentive hopefully to attract people into the community. And again, I'll just stress this because I've worked on a lot of grant applications and things like that. It's efficient for your users, for your employees, and things like that. It's just another incentive hopefully to attract people into the community. And again, I'll just stress this, because I've worked on a lot of grant applications and things like that. If you went into a federal or a state grant opportunity and you didn't have a plan like this, you'd struggle getting your project funded. So again, these studies a lot of times are showing that collaborative type of work that was done, the foreplanning that was done, prior to just saying, well, now that we got the money, let's go figure out what we need to do. These people like to see, you know, dirt turned as quickly as possible when they're giving out that non-traditional funding. So again, hopefully the plan sets you up for that. So that's all I've got. If you've got specific questions, I'd be happy to answer them.
Does the council have any questions? Councilman Bowman?
Thank you. Appreciate your report. As far as the traffic counts, the state does that every two years?
Correct.
Do you know what the current count was on Highway 12? Or is that in your report?
It is.
I didn't see the fine print.
Well, it's broken down here, we broke it into segments. The last count we had was the 2012, we didn't have the 2014 data. It takes a while for them to, you know, check it and process that. But this is broken down by various segments, so I don't know if you're looking at a specific area, but the traffic volumes range from 6,100 on the far west end, to the highest point right in the industrial drive, and 11th Street segment was about 10,000 trips per day. These are average annual daily traffic volumes. This isn't right during, you know, peak harvest time, or you know, if there's a lot of truck traffic specifically with a period in time. This is, you know, the average among your, you know, weekend in the summer where you probably got some of your highest volumes to, you know, the weekend in the middle of winter here when people are hibernating at home, so...
So the 2014 is not, they don't complete that study in July or August or September? It's at the...
When do you guys publish, though?
I think it'll be early next year.
Early next year, they'd be available.
Okay.
And we'd anticipate there would be, you know, some change, you know, in a two-year period, probably not a substantial change as you see here, you know, among the historical volumes that are shown here. Things move a couple hundred here and there. There were larger drops or increases may have been associated with, you know, some of the bypass section opening up and things like that, so...
Is there anything addressed as far as the drainage issue alongside Highway 12?
We looked a little bit at drainage, that wasn't the focus of the study. We know it was an issue raised, not necessarily right in the downtown area, but you know, as you get more out to the east, there are some issues out there. You know, those are really probably a more detailed design type of issue that you need to look at, okay, where exactly is this water coming from? Where exactly is this water going? You know, MINDOT loves to handle their own water and deal with their own water, but you know, we recognize there are some of the ditches out here that are handling, you know, overland flow from, you know, the adjacent farm fields, to the roadway, to the ditch system that's miles away. And there are some issues. And we called out a few recommendations for more detailed drainage analysis. Clearly, if you get a project out here and you're gonna make improvements, there would have to be some, you know, pretty significant hydraulic analysis done to make sure culverts are sized correctly, whether or not you need some more storage retention type of ponds to, you know, hold that, and you know, provide that storage before releasing that water downstream.
And your firm doesn't do that work?
We do do that work, we sure do do that work. But again, that's, you know, more so when you have a specific, you know, design that you're going forward with. Not that we don't with a three-lane section, but that's at a final design type of level, even when you size a culvert and, you know, placement and angle and all that, slopes of ditches, yeah.
Thank you.
Councilman Chris?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and thank you. The three-lane concept, you know, going through here, we have four lanes presently from the one end of town to the other. Why was that brought about, and do you find that with three lanes, with the center turn lane, traffic has slowed down?
A three-lane versus a four-lane, you've got a narrower corridor. People drive faster on a wider corridor, I'll just make that general statement, so whether they slow down or not. You know, a lot of times speeds are the product of the design speed that the road is built at, the perception of what people think they can drive safely, and very much about enforcement. You know, we can build a road at a design speed of 30 miles an hour, but if it's straight as an arrow and there's nothing on either side and they feel like it's wide open, the only way you're gonna get people to slow down probably is enforce them to slow down. So with that, basically, you know, your speech... The other question was why the three-lane?
Yeah.
Section? A three-lane section, again, can fit within the existing corridor without a lot of impacts to adjacent properties. A three-lane section has a ability to have the capacity to take anywhere between 7,000 and almost 15,000 trips per day on it. That far exceeds what we have out here and even what we projected for the year 2040 forecast. The three-lane section also provides that opportunity to remove the left-turning traffic, which seemed like, we had crash data I didn't put up there, because those tables are even smaller, but the crash data really indicated that a lot of our problems were from turning traffic as well with the crashes. People getting rear-ended, people getting sideswiped, things like that. So there, again, you create a lane where those people can sit, they're not having to worry about the person coming up behind them too fast, it gets them out of the traffic lane and creates the free-flow condition, so...
And did I hear you say also that because of the, you know, three-lane going from four to three, we would be able to have some kind of a bike lane?
Well, we would have shoulders, and again, in Minnesota, it's legal to ride on the shoulders of any roadway except unless you're on the interstate. And so, yeah, a six-lane is the narrowest section of shoulder we would be able to maintain. In some areas, we'd be able to provide even a 10-foot, as you get outside of the downtown, a 10-foot shoulder. You know, most of our bike trails are 10-foot as well, so you would have that. When we talked to the city about that, I think you have an ongoing study, maybe right now you're looking at some trails and, you know, park connections and things like that. We recognize there are some facilities planned or even existing, you know, that maybe just people aren't utilizing as much, or they're just, you know, taking the highway, they feel safe, I guess, but it sure makes me nervous. I'm not one of those commuter bikers, but they like to be right out there too, so we want to make that accommodation for them.
Okay, once again, thank you.
You're welcome.
Councilman Nelson?
Thank you. Thank you for this information. This may be more of a staff question, is this a document available for the public, is it online? I struggled with our two slides per page on...
Sure.
...and not being able to see the detail of the map, so I'm just wondering if there could be...
We have an electronic version that we can place up on our website.
The city has a number of hard copies, we've got electronic copies. It is on the MINDOT website, the website is located here on the bottom of this, the study in its entirety.
It is?
Yep.
Okay, thank you very much.
And I believe the city's gonna have, you'll have it on theirs as well.
Thank you.
Yeah, and you'll add it to our website as well.
Councilman Lee?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Couple of quick questions on the 7th Street Southwest intersection. That was improved with a right-turn lane this past summer. Is there any plans to expand the right-turn lane for the, would be the westbound traffic there? And also, second question about that area of the roadway is the Litchfield Avenue. Did you look at any possibility that that may be reopened as a one-way, especially if you went to this three-way design where you've got a berm in the middle?
I'll address your first question. That 7th Street intersection, which is showing up on the very left side over here of this figure here, we did have that identified as an issue. It was brought up many times, people headed westbound coming around the S-curve there, and traffic backs up from the red light, and then all of a sudden they come around that corner, and the sightline's not real good because the building's, you know, encroaching in that corner, and wow, there's someone's brake lights right in, you know, right in your front grille. It's a tight area, I'll say that. First of all, that was one area where we did actually take a cross-section of a four-lane, and we were well into those buildings if we tried to add that extra lane there. A right-turn lane, we could maybe scab in a short one. With a three-lane section, it was, it would be very tight and very short. What we also recommended was, and it's the note up here in the white text, is adding an advanced warning system signal in that location. Maybe you've seen those in other areas where the light turns yellow and that light starts going off to let people know, oh, or if it's already red, it's flashing. So as you're coming around, you know you're gonna need to stop in advance of that. So that was one, you know, site-specific recommendation. But accommodating a right-turn lane, we looked at it, it would be, it'd be narrow, you know, in that area. It wouldn't be able to be very long, because again, the property's located right there, but it's a possibility with the three-lane section to put in there. The second question regarding opening Litchfield, I don't know what the staff wants to talk about, that was brought up. It wasn't included in the report, because the city had produced, I believe it was a number of years ago, some real high-level schematic drawings that they shared with us. We took a little bit further review of those and talked about them at a couple of our technical advisory team meetings. Bruce has those on as part of the file from the record. I think MINDOT left it as, and they can correct me if I'm wrong, that, you know, they're not opposed to looking at the west side of downtown as possibly opening up, but they're not endorsing opening up, but they would want the city to take that the next step further, taking that to a higher level of design, you know, maybe doing a real detailed safety study and seeing whether or not that could be a possibility. When we looked at it from that higher level that we were doing the study at, it could work from an engineering standpoint, absolutely, we could design something there, but there are some issues with it. Again, you know, headlights coming into a traffic that is already on Litchfield in that area, some of the circulation in the downtown area, and how would cars be able to circulate down on 5th Street and things like that as well. So there are, you know, some pros and cons lists that we put together. It was studied, it wasn't part of this recommended study, but it's something that you could definitely take further, yes.
Okay, thank you.
Are there any further questions or comments? Thank you very much, appreciate it. Presentation of the Highway 12 corridor, whoops, I'm sorry, discussion regarding Resolution Number 44. Charlene, do you want to introduce whoever we need to...
Actually, Mr. Wesley Hopp, the General Manager of the Utilities, is here this evening to speak to this matter.
Thank you.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, City Council. I'm following up on conversation that we had at the City Council meeting of December 1st. During that meeting, I was asked to bring the agreement that we have, Number 44, which is a land purchase agreement for the Priam substation, back in front of the Wilmer Municipal Utilities Commission for a bit more discussion. At that December 8th meeting, the agreement was supported by the commission, and they directed me to leave the agreement as it is with the City Council and wait for action from the City Council. So that's where I'm at right now. If I want, if you would like me to supplement the information that provided on December 1st, I'd be glad to.
Does the council have questions for us around here? Yes, Councilman Chris?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and thanks for coming, Wes. Maybe you could explain to the public the, I don't wanna say technical reasons, but the specific reasons why that location is a prime location regardless of cost.
Okay. Prior to, well, there was a study, I explained last time, there was a study done in 2010 as a result of discussions from Great River Energy, the transmission operator in our area, and Wilmer Utilities, that we needed something to supplement what we had supplying power to the area. Study consequently said that there should be not only that substation, or an additional substation source, but also work done on the north end of the county. The work at the north end had been done, and for this, we were trying to identify a second source. And so, what we have on here, on the screen is in yellow, we have a 115,000-volt line going along Highway 23 through the city of Priam. As that line crosses from the north side of the road to the south side of the road, there's a guide structure. That essentially is what we call a dead end, where the direction of the line changes, and there's guys holding it up to allow you, give you a better access to the line. We wanted to have, one of the criteria, as like I said before, was to keep the substation far enough away from the existing substation to provide a bit of geographic separation in case there was some sort of tornado that came through that damaged the one but not the other. It also provides a full backup for the existing substation, and we wanted to have it relatively close to our existing 69,000-volt system, which supplies not only the waste treatment plant here, but also there's a loop through the city of Wilmer supplying all of our distribution substations, and that's where you're getting your power right now. Our power plant adjacent to us provides 18% of our power, everything else comes in from outside. And so, if we do lose our substation south of Wilmer, we have very few other options to help keep things going. There is another 115,000-volt line nearby, but it doesn't provide city of Wilmer that kind of protection. So we looked at this spot right here where it crosses the road, we looked at the nearness to the 69,000-volt line, and we also looked at how much it costs to build lines to get to a geographic location. That yellow line you see there, the cost per mile estimate that they use for putting this up is $385,000 a mile. And so, we had a question at one time, if we had utilized the land that has already been purchased by the city and at the waste treatment plant. And if you look at that, that's about a two-mile distance. If you take two miles times 385,000, you get $770,000 just in 115,000-volt lines. That 69,000-volt line there was designed to serve the waste treatment plant only, not back up the entire city and part of the county. So that would be required to be rebuilt. So what you end up having is two miles of line at the high voltage, and about one mile of 69, which ends up being about 920,000, because the 69,000-volt line ends up being, it's estimated at about $230,000 per mile to construct. So by going to this particular spot, you reduce your 69,000-volt line to that corner, which is about a mile, and your 115 line to just about zero. So when we're looking at the overall picture, the transmission lines dictated the location. We just realized when we were looking at that spot, it had been underutilized or not utilized, and we weren't really interested, like I said before, who owned the land, just that this was a good spot for that to happen. In the future, there's also more potential for more 115,000-volt expansion, because there's always more electrical needs. And as happened from the 25 years I've been here, the load of Wilmer went from a 40-megawatt peak to a 66-megawatt peak, and I don't see any indications of it not continuing in that direction. So that's the main reason that particular spot was chosen, and as I said before, we chose the spot and then found out who the owner was.
Thank you, thank you, Wes.
Do you have any other comments or questions?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, go ahead.
If I could continue, thank you. Here's what I know, I know that, I'm convinced we need a second substation, after talking to you, a couple commissioners, and some employees at the Wilmer Utilities. And I'm convinced that this is probably the prime location for it. Couple of things that trouble me are, it cut to the chase, the owners of the property, whom we have doled out much money to as a city, just not too long ago and in the past, want to sell the entire 48 acres that we don't need to us. It looks like they don't want to cut it up and sell us just what we need, the 20 acres, whatever you said. At the time, we were dealing with Hormel and the land transfer tax abatement, moving County 40 out here, or Highway 40, so they could begin phase one of their expansion. We knew that we were looking at this land, and somewhere along the line, I know that the two paths crossed, and we weren't made aware of it, and we could have done some kind of a land swap, or land swap agreement at that time. And it troubles me that we have to pay top-market value for this property. I don't mind buying it all... I don't mind buying it all for the utilities, but it just troubles me that we have to pay that amount of money after doling out over $3 million of money to this Fortune 500 company that owns the owner of that land. That's the only stick in my spoke wheel. I just, I'm troubled by that. I don't think there's much we can do about it, because it is the prime location, but I'm sure we'll be dealing with these people somewhere down the road also. Yeah, I'll leave it at that.
Do we have any further comments? Okay.
You have one?
Go ahead.
Just, I don't know, Mr. Scott, I guess maybe you can answer this question, that when a governmental entity purchases property from a private company, are we not required to pay fair market value for that property, for the fair market assessed value?
Generally, that's true. There's many circumstances where there's a specific regulation that will require a governmental entity to get an appraisal and to make an offer in the amount of that appraisal. I don't know if that was, strictly speaking, a legal requirement here, that is how these transactions frequently go. I will say that if the city were looking, or excuse me, if the utilities were looking to use its eminent domain authority to acquire this parcel or any part of it, it absolutely would have been required to get an appraisal and to make an offer in that amount to the property owner before it could proceed with condemnation action.
Yeah, thank you, that was my second part on the eminent domain, thank you.
Any further questions or comments?
Yes, Mr. Mayor.
Go ahead.
So as I understand it, Wes, I don't want to be repetitive here, but this location, I mean, one of the prime aspects of it is that even paying, even having to buy 47 acres when we don't need that many, and what we have to pay for it, it's still the cheaper of our alternatives, is that correct? Because of the line construction and the amount of distance and all those things that go into it, we can't do it cheaper any other way.
Well, I'm sure there's some land somewhere that may have better options, but you have to combine all of those different factors that I had said before, where you have the transmission lines coming to it. If you move away from that spot down Highway 23, following the 115 line, you increase your 230 KV require, or you increase your 69 KV requirements at $230,000 a mile. And so, yes, it reduces, you could reduce it possibly, but I haven't been able to find any land, and I don't think we could get any closer or better fit than we write that we found.
Thank you.
Hi, Wes, hate to put you on the hot seat. And yeah, your role shouldn't have to be political, so I appreciate all the, all the things we're doing on this, One Resolution Number 44, and thanks, thank you for your consistent remarks, your comments, and the way you go about it, and the way you present yourself, first-class act, good job. I was just curious, though, when did you, you know, so this doesn't happen again, how can we, as a city council, be, collaborate and better understand and communicate on these types of transactions so this doesn't happen again? We're learning by our mistakes. In this case, I think it was an issue that we were not informed, and we wish we would have been. I'm not going to say who's to fault, but I'm kind of curious, you know, when did you advise city staff or the city administrator that it was GNEO Turkey Store, and you were intending on buying this? Was there any letter of communication or written documentation back and forth or negotiations with city staff and GNEO Turkey Store, or with their city attorney?
We worked with, we worked with the city staff as often as we possibly can, going through different things. We have, in the planning commission meeting minutes, there is the name there, it was no secret, we went through that whole process with them at that meeting, at the planning commission, the city planning commission, and so it was there too. Like I said, there was, as far as we were concerned, no interest on who owned it, we were just getting what we thought was our best location.
And as far as negotiations, that was you and your staff that dealt negotiations?
I assigned it to our director of operations and engineer. They went ahead and commissioned the appraisal. They presented the appraisal to GNEO, who accepted the appraised value of the land.
Thank you very much. Do you have any knowledge, I happen to be talking to a farmer who farmed that land years ago, and said it was very wet, and it was good for cutting hay and pasture land, about, he said over, well, he said over about 40, 50 percent of that was not very desirable for agricultural purposes, other than to raise livestock or to make hay. And I'm just wondering how that came about in the agreement. Is the drainage going to be taken care of, because he also said that it was extremely wet? Is that land going to be drained with this turnover from GNEO?
I don't anticipate Wilmer Utilities installing drainage on the land that we aren't going to use for the substation. We are looking at an area that would be above any wet areas. A substation cannot be put into a low area, and what modifications were going to be required to make it suitable for a substation will be on the higher end.
Okay, thank you.
Councilperson Nelson?
Just a question, Wes, on the, when did the planning commission meet? I mean, it's, there's implications here, like it's gone back a long ways, but if I remember correctly from our minutes, when did the planning commission meet? It hasn't been?
We brought this in front of the planning commission, I believe, in November of this year.
Okay, so it's within, this has been going on for a shorter period of time than what is being implied here, I believe.
Well, we brought it in front, we were negotiating with GNEO starting in January.
Okay.
They accepted the appraised value after we commissioned their appraiser, and then we had to go through the details of the agreement throughout the entire summer and into the end of the fall, until we came in front of the planning commission with an agreement. And essentially, the agreement was through their attorneys, our attorney, to make sure that we were whole on both ways, and that they would clean, they agreed to clean out the buildings and the foundations, and properly abandon any existing wells that may have been on the property to make it suitable for a substation.
Okay, thank you. I think it's just important to clarify the timeframe, because there's been some comments made about, like this has been going on forever, so, thank you.
Mr. Mayor, I just want to comment, I believe this has been going on since April of 2013, correct?
We introduced the Priam substation into our budget in 2011.
Right.
But it wasn't, we didn't look at it as a specific piece of land until, actually, the end of 2013, not April, but the end of 2013, and commissioned an appraiser at the beginning of 2014.
Thank you, Wes.
Are there any further questions, or Councilman Vegerly?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Wes, do you remember when you bought Taco John's, did you have a problem buying it from the council?
I don't recall.
Okay, how about when you bought Jerry's Liquor Store?
No, I don't recall that either. We had appraised values on both of those.
Okay. Just seems like when a certain name comes up, this council gets upset, so, I don't
Do we have a resolution?
No, sir, if there's no action by anybody, your timeframe to override the commission's action terminates at the end of this meeting.
Okay, if there is no action.
Mr. Mayor, I move to veto Resolution 44, the MUC minutes.
Motion has been made to veto the Resolution 44 minutes. This is, do I hear a second? I don't hear a second. Motion dies.
Mr. Mayor, a motion to approve the minutes with Resolution 44.
Point of order, I understand we don't need one. It's approved if we don't act.
But it's not out of order, you can approve. It'll be the same result.
Didn't we, we pulled the minutes, didn't we, or did we approve everything except this section?
We extended.
Mr. Mayor, council members, my recollection is, you approved the minutes from that meeting, accepting Resolution 44, which you exercise your authority, you extend your time to consider it for 30 days. That 30 days will expire on December 17th. Obviously, this is your last meeting before that date. If no action is taken, the resolution, and it is not vetoed, as the motion has failed to get a second, that resolution will take effect. There's no reason you couldn't move to approve it, but it is not necessary.
So we have, what should we?
We have a motion to approve Resolution 44 of the MUC minutes of November, whatever it is, forgot.
Was it seconded? I have. That dies. That dies. We have no approval or disapproval of that, so we forfeit, right?
Just move on to the next item.
Yeah, we go to the next item, as taken care of, no action was necessary, no action was taken.
Thank you for your time, Councilman.
You're welcome. Thank you, Wes. At this point, I will say that I need to leave soon, and I'll leave the rest of the council meeting in very capable hands of our mayor, Pro Tem, and, but I will wait until we get through the finance meeting. And I will put that up to you right now, in the finance committee report of December 8th, 2014. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. We did meet, we called the meeting to order at 4:45, there were no public comments. The number three item on our agenda was Engen Associates contract amendment having to do with the autumn auditorium project. Clerk Halliday explained to the committee that Engen Associates is requesting an amendment to their architectural services contract to add $798.67 for printing and reproduction costs of bid documents. Following discussion, there was a motion made to not approve the amendment, that was seconded. Then there was a vote of the finance committee, and it ended in a two-to-two, no decision coming from the finance committee. So this item comes to the full council with no recommendation from the finance committee. So what would we like to do?
I'll make a motion for its approval.
We have a motion? We have a motion?
Second.
And a second, to the consideration of the Engen Associates contract amendment, and that would be a roll call, am I right?
Discussion.
Discussion.
Here, Yanis?
Yes, go ahead.
I'd like to call on staff just to walk through the, I believe the staff recommendation was to approve it, so I'd like to just have the staff have a little discussion about that again, please.
I think I can start, and then Mr. Halliday can fill in, I think, anything that I leave out. The expenditures that are in question have been requested by Engen Associates, which is to pay the cost of printing and reproduction from the bid documents to be used by the contractors. There's not a question that those are legitimate expenses, I mean, they did incur those expenses. I think there might be some question as to how the language was written in their original proposal. It's, could be, I guess, argued either way, that it's either, that they had a cost for bidding documents in there at about 2,500. You could, I guess, make an argument that these expenses maybe should have been part of that, or that they should have been spelled out more clearly, but it is a legitimate expense that Engen has incurred, and the staff recommendation is to, is to pay that expense.
Counselman?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I opposed this at the finance committee, and I still oppose this motion. This was a competitive bidding process. All the other bidders that bid on this work included these specific items in their bid. It would be, I think it violates the spirit and intent of the bidding process, that we're bound by law to follow on contracts of this nature, and I just don't think it's appropriate to allow bidders that don't bid the item, you know, all the items, and then come in the back door and want to amend their bidding. To me, it defeats the whole purpose of the bidding process, and the integrity of that process. I'm not saying whether, you know, they didn't incur these expenses, but they didn't bid for those, and they're not, they weren't included in their bid, and then as Mr. Halliday advised us during our finance committee meeting, the other bidders did bid these items in their bids, so I just don't think it's appropriate.
Mayor Yanis?
I better clarify that.
Go ahead, would you clarify that, please?
We must have had a miscommunication. We chose Engen and Associates from multiple bids to do the overall plan and design, and that was a $9,500 plan to put the whole city auditorium in perspective. That was a competitive bid. From that point on, we stayed with that consultant and carried the project through, so this second layer was not. However, what I did not conclude, and I did for this meeting, was Exhibit 3 of their contract, which broke all those categories down. I mean, this is one of these cases where you could, you could choose either side and defend it rather well. The staff recommendation that I made to pay it is that these costs are general in nature and unknown of those costs, and that's why we normally pay it like this, is that you don't know if you would have one set of blueprints or 19 set of blueprints, and so your cost is exponential by the volume of bidders. We quite, almost all the time, I think, pay a portion of something in a project laid out like this. Both sides are defensible.
Councilperson Nelson, did you have a question?
No, I was simply going to ask Mr. Halliday to clarify that, which he did, thank you.
Councilman Anderson? Thank you, Mr. Mayor. You know, this, I think this is one of those things, maybe it can be argued both ways. We've done business for years and years and years with Engen and Associates. They do a tremendous amount of work for our community, and I think this is an issue of fairness. I think if they forgot to put it in, or if they didn't, and if it's payable or not, it's pretty much standard practice to pay this, and I think that they should be paid for the work that they performed. Councilman Johnson?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Kevin, my understanding of your remarks at our meeting was that they had been billing this amount for several bills in a row that they had submitted to the council, or to staff, and that you had paid everything in those bills but this amount, and at some point, you had an exchange of, or exchange of information with them, wherein you advised them that they would have to seek an amendment in order to get these paid, because they weren't covered initially.
That, that communication is correct. We get a progress report broken down by the four categories that I submitted in Exhibit 3, and this was added to one of the categories, I trust bidding and negotiating, and so I would just line it out and send it up, and after a couple line-outs, where they constantly resubmit it on the next progress invoice, we finally had to address it, and that was the letter before that addressing it.
Thank you.
Councilman Dogg?
Just a simple question, we don't have, the public doesn't have the documents from finance on the screen, and so is there a reason for that?
Do we have the documents?
No. We don't have the full agenda. We don't have the full agenda up to put on the screen. What's referenced is a schedule of project fees, and where they included two thousand five hundred for bidding and negotiating in their schedule of project fees.
We have typically had the Finance Committee minutes on the screen, have we not?
No.
No.
Counselman Christiansen?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Who's the general contractor for this project? I mean, I'm assuming it's Ingham, and, I mean, they've been handling all of the bidding and taking, I mean, are they the general?
They are the construction, I mean, Cornerstone Construction would be considered the general. The bid was awarded to Cornerstone Construction. Ingham is serving as the city's agent to manage the project. I mean, they're the architects for the project, and they're doing the construct, they did the construction bidding documentation, and then the construction management.
Okay, I wasn't at the meeting, so I didn't get the flavor of it, and what are they, what are they rebidding? What are they putting out there? If Cornerstone is the general, you know, they're the ones that hired all the subcontractors.
They are not, Ingham is not rebidding anything. Ingham is seeking reimbursement for the cost of preparing planned documents and specifications that were used in the original bid process. So they prepared the plan, they prepared the bid documents, and they prepared various plan sets, CDs and such, that were, that were given to potential bidders, and they're seeking reimbursement of those costs for those documents that they prepared for the bid that ultimately was awarded to Cornerstone.
But wasn't our first contract with them including that?
Well, that, I think, I think that's where we have said, their original schedule of project fees included two thousand five hundred for bidding and negotiation. You could make the case that this should have been included in there. It's more typical that these are reimbursed at kind of at the cost, or the number of plan sets, because they don't have an idea of how many plan sets and such will be distributed until the bidders pick them up typically. It should have been maybe more clearly spelled out, but I don't think we're in any dispute that they were legitimate expenses, that these were, the number of plan sets and such that they distributed were, were distributed in the course of bidding the original project, and whether they went to, you know, generals or subcontractors, but they were part of the original bid, if that clarifies things.
Do we have a, a motion on the table?
I think so.
We have a resolution to approve an amendment to the contract to include this seven hundred ninety-eight dollars.
Okay, roll call.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, go ahead.
If I may, just another thought here. Earlier, Kevin, you mentioned that they had been submitting these, and we'd just been paying them.
No.
No? As you can see on page, on Exhibit Three, there's a total project rate, and the design development came first, so you slowly get an invoice after the first month, and the design development is all done, construction documents now all done, and construction administration is still ongoing. So when they're partial payments, and you work, it's a monthly activity, this is probably the third month, so we've had two or three of them.
And then, when they meet our contract threshold, then they have to submit this, is that what you're saying?
Well, they submit every month, and the progress of these four subcategories is what the invoice says. The first one might have had sixty percent done in design and five percent done in construction documents. Now, at this point, design is a hundred percent done, I've paid it, construction a hundred percent done, bidding and negotiating, plus an invoice amount of seven ninety-eight that I can't pay because it's locked in at forty-four thousand, and construction administration might be fifty percent done as of today.
So, I mean, we've met that threshold?
Yes, we've met those thresholds.
And above and beyond it?
Correct.
Yeah, so the forty-four is done. It's been paid out after that amount, and they had to invoice you for this because it was additional. Okay.
Any further questions or comments? Roll call.
Councilmember Christiansen?
I'm going to say no.
Amen?
No.
Nelson?
Yes.
Johnson?
No.
Dawkins?
No.
Fagerly?
Aye.
DeBlick?
Yes, aye.
Anderson?
Aye.
Four ayes, four nays. Mayor, you are allowed to break the tie in this case.
Allowed to break a tie? I don't know a whole lot about it. So, what do you mean by allowed to make a tie?
Well, I guess that's a legal question to the city attorney, whether you're required to vote or you're allowed to vote. I will not get involved there.
Thank you.
Mayor, in certain votes, if the tally of the vote is four to four, the charter gives you the authority to cast a tie-breaking vote, one way or the other, yes or no? This is one of those votes. You have the right to vote here. I don't believe it's an obligation to vote. Obviously, if you don't vote and the vote remains tied, it will fail because it did not get a majority of the votes cast.
I will... Do a no, no vote.
The vote tally is four ayes, five nays. The resolution to amend the budget fails.
Okay. The next item on our agenda was change order number two for Cornerstone of Wilmer having to do with the auditorium project. Clerk Halliday reported to us that during the abatement process at the auditorium, it was noticed that the glass wall between the gun range staging room and the training room was unsecured, mainly due to a design of having the glass wall held up by the hanging ceiling tiles. This wobbly scenario resulted in a broken section of glass. The remedy of this design failure is to construct a soffit over the wall and secure the top aluminum mullion. This soffit will close off the ceiling space and stabilize the glass wall, and that would be done at a cost of thirty-two hundred dollars. It's being proposed that this amount be used would come from the emergency fund. Following discussion, there was a motion made second in the past, and I would introduce a resolution to execute the contract with Cornerstone of Wilmer to construct a soffit over the glass wall between the gun range staging room and the training room at the auditorium in the amount of thirty-two hundred dollars.
Second. The motion has been made and seconded for the resolution to authorize change order number two in the amount of thirty-two hundred dollars. Is there any discussion?
Mayor Yanis?
Councilwoman?
Mr. Halliday, would you please go through who recommended this and how this resolution came about?
Well, the initial call, Councilmember Nelson, was from the owner of Nationwide Paint and Glass, who was dealing with our cleaning consultant Echo, who broke a large pane, four-by-eight pane, and he talked to me about its wobbly, and we had to find a better solution than tying a glass wall into ceiling tiles. We then embarked on our consultant and architect, Ingham and Associates, who came there, reviewed the outcome, made a recommendation that a soffit structure is the better option, and we proceeded to get bids from the general contractor, which was Cornerstone of Wilmer.
Is there any further discussion?
Mayor Yanis?
Yes.
I'd just like to comment, I think Ingham and Associates have gone above and beyond on this contract, and I hope that we haven't done damage to this, to complete it.
Thank you. Any further comments, Orkins?
It's a roll call, sir.
Roll call.
Councilmember Amen?
Aye.
Nelson?
Aye.
Johnson?
Aye.
Dawkins?
Aye.
Fagerly?
Aye.
DeBlick?
Aye.
Anderson?
Aye.
Christiansen?
Aye.
Eight ayes, zero nays.
And that carries?
The next item was water heater and locker room furnace replacement. This is at the Civic Center. The arena manager explained to us that a couple of weeks ago, the water heater at the Civic Center failed. Temporary repairs have been made in orders to sustain needed hot water for the arena. However, a new unit is required. It was also noted that the locker room furnace is in need of replacement as well. Quotes have been received with Magnuson Sheet Metal as the low bidder for a total of eighteen thousand, two hundred and twenty-five dollars. It's being proposed that unspent twenty thirteen capital improvement funds originally budgeted for cedar shake replacement at the Civic Center be reallocated for the water heater and the furnace replacement. Following discussion, there was a motion made second in the past, and I would introduce a resolution to reallocate twenty thirteen CIP funds originally budgeted for cedar shake replacement to be used for the water heater and furnace replacement at the Civic Center.
Second.
The motion has been made and seconded to approve replacing the water heater at the Civic Center at the cost of fifteen thousand, five hundred dollars, and the locker room furnace at a cost of twenty-seven, twenty-five from Magnuson Sheet Metal Incorporated. Is there any discussion? Roll call.
Councilmember Nelson?
Aye.
Johnson?
Aye.
Dawkins?
Aye.
Fagerly?
Aye.
DeBlick?
Aye.
Anderson?
Aye.
Christiansen?
Aye.
Amen?
Aye.
Eight ayes, zero nays.
The motion carries?
There was no old business. Under new business, Finance Director Okens reminded the committee that the League of Minnesota Cities conducted a webinar on December ninth at one P.M., and that was in reference to the state budget forecast. Council members were invited to attend that, and I believe one or two did. Unless there's questions, I would move to file these minutes.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to file the minutes of the Finance Committee Report of December eighth, two thousand fourteen. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any discussion first? All those in favor say aye.
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 Those opposed say no. That motion carries. Let's take a five-minute break.
Don't forget your stuff.
I won't forget my stuff.
Let's reconvene the city council meeting. We are down to number fourteen on the agenda, which is Public Works Safety Committee, December ninth. Councilmember Christianson.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, Pro Tem. We did hold our meeting on Tuesday, December ninth, two thousand and fourteen, at four forty-five P.M. Item number one was called to order. Item number two, we had public comments, nobody was there to comment. So we went on to item number three, which is our police and fire update. Our police chief felt noted that jail census for December ninth, that day was one hundred eighteen, eighty-two were from Candyway County, twenty-eight from the Department of Corrections, four from Swift County, and four from Big Stone County. The calls for service for the previous two weeks in Wilmer were six hundred and fourteen. And he explained that the majority of those calls were for traffic stops, public assistance, crashes. Inmates from neighboring counties in our jail are due to smaller jails at their facilities or to house women inmates. The new police canine will be arriving tentatively on Sunday, that would have been yesterday, a month earlier than expected, to Officer Chris Flattan, who has been assigned canine duty. The Public Works Department set up a kennel for the dog at Officer Flattan's home with pavers donated by Dunick Incorporated. A naming contest is taking place in Wilmer with the public schools, children from the schools and the community Christian School. They will be voting on the dog's name evidently. Have we come up with one yet, Chief? This day we should have a decision made. So, there's about thirteen hundred names that have been turned in so far. Good luck. Also at the meeting was our fire chief, Mr. Hendrickson, and he noted that we have had two-hundred-and-seventy-five fire calls for the year compared to two-twenty-five at the same time, two thousand and thirteen. The increase of calls is primarily due to unintentional activation of fire alarms and malfunction of commercial building fire alarms, along with calls for burnt food. Our next item had to do with receiving the improvement report and order improvement, order the improvement hearing, which is a resolution. Our Public Works Director, Sean Christianson, brought forth the, for approval, the engineering improvement report for next year, two thousand and fifteen, and ordering the improvement hearing for Jan, or February seventeenth, two thousand and fifteen, at seven oh one P.M. It was questioned if the city is keeping on, keeping up on crack sealing and seal coating to achieve maximum life out of the streets. The pavement management program process needs to be followed to get the streets up to date with maintenance. An exact date is difficult to determine when the street condition will be brought up, will be caught up because of multiple variables such as funding, traffic patterns, utility changes, state aid, and expectations of the council and the public, along with weather. There was discussion about moving the bid process earlier in the year and notifying citizens earlier about the potential projects affecting them. The committee discussed the impact of the reconstruction of Park Avenue and Ninth Street Northwest on Candyway County Fair, on the Candyway County Fair at next August, and the possibility of turning Woodland Avenue Northwest over to the Fair Board, as it is on their property. The effect of the reconstruction of the Block Fifty parking lot downtown was also noted as it is heavily used. The project can potentially be done in phases to accommodate parking and will be discussed with the contractor before any construction begins. After some discussion, a motion is made, seconded and passed, for the following, and that was to receive the improvement report and order the improvement hearing. I understand, Kevin, that is a resolution, and we'll have two following that. So I will introduce that resolution.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to set the improvement hearing. Any discussion?
That hearing date would be set for February seventeenth.
February seventeenth?
That's the recommended date, February seventeenth, two thousand and fifteen.
Okay. So noted. Further discussion? Roll call.
Councilmember Johnson.
Aye.
Dawkin.
Aye.
Fagerly.
Aye.
DeBlick.
Aye.
Anderson.
Aye.
Christianson.
Aye.
Amen.
Aye.
Nelson.
Aye.
Eight ayes, zero nays.
That passes.
We have two other resolutions to introduce after passing that, and the one is to introduce a resolution to approve the recommended budget for the two thousand and fifteen improvement projects, which we all received. And I will introduce that resolution.
Second.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to approve the budget for the improvements.
I forget the total amount, but it was a little over three million dollars, is it correct, Sean? Mayor Pro Tem, members of the council, that is correct, it's just under three-point-one, it's just over three million dollars. Okay.
Okay. Further discussion? Roll call.
Councilmember Dawkin.
Aye.
Fagerly.
Aye.
DeBlick.
Aye.
Anderson.
Aye.
Christianson.
Aye.
Amen.
Aye.
Nelson.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Eight ayes, zero nays.
That passes.
The next resolution has to do with, it's necessary for the council to adopt a resolution for intent to reimburse. This will ensure that the city will be reimbursed for the project costs after the date of the resolution. So I want to introduce a resolution establishing procedures relating to compliance with reimbursement bond regulations under the Internal Revenue Code.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second with the intent to reimburse ourselves for expenses that we incur. Discussion? Roll call.
Councilmember Fagerly.
Aye.
DeBlick.
Aye.
Anderson.
Aye.
Christianson.
Aye.
Amen.
Aye.
Nelson.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Dawkin.
Aye.
Eight ayes, zero nays.
That passes.
Item number five was old business. Councilmember Amen requested an update on the stormwater issues, and Public Works Director Christianson stated that he is in the process of reviewing the integrated plans and how they may be included in the capital improvement plan. The council, the committee discussed the review of the city's ordinance for snow emergencies with removal of parked vehicles along city streets to allow plows to clean the streets properly and efficiently. Item six was new business, there wasn't any new business there, so if, unless you have some comments or questions, I would move to file these minutes.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to file the Public Works Committee, Safety Committee minutes. All in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed, that passes. Labor Relations Committee, Councilmember Amen.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, Pro Tem. We met December tenth, Wednesday, at four forty-five in Conference Room One. There was nobody, we called the meeting to order, there were no public comments, nobody in the audience to make any comments. We had a closed session pursuant to Minnesota statutes thirteen D point oh three, thirteen D point oh three, excuse me, to discuss labor strategies. The meeting was closed at four forty-seven P.M., and the meeting was reopened at five twenty P.M. on a motion and a second. Item number three was consideration of the contract with Law Enforcement Labor Services, L.A.L.S., for two thousand and fifteen. The negotiating committee came back with the recommendations. We reviewed the tentative agreement with law enforcement, and those are attached, summarizing the statement, the agreement for two thousand and fifteen. I also highlighted the annual wage increases of two percent, and all other conditions remain the same. There is a motion made and seconded to approve the contract with L.A.L.S. for two thousand and fifteen, as described and attached, and the motion carried, and I would move that recommendation of the committee, Mr. Mayor.
Second.
Mayor Pro Tem.
We have a motion and a second to approve the contract with Law Enforcement Labor Services reflecting a two percent wage increase. Discussion? All in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed, that passes.
Item number four, old business, might have to revise some of these minutes here. I requested an update, committee update, from Ms. Stevens on succession progress preparation from sixteen months ago. The issue was raised of the importance of succession planning in the organization, specifically the transfer of institutional knowledge in the organization. Ms. Stevens explained what the city has done to date to try to prepare individuals for future promotional opportunities, and noted in some cases it is difficult to find internal candidates. Mr. Anderson noted that it is important to have a balance of internal promotions and new ideas. Mr. Christianson also stated that it was important to develop internal candidates if possible. Appointments to boards and committees was, I brought the issue up based on a concern from other citizens that have called me through the years on individuals in our boards and commissions who serve on more than one committee, and the duplication and potential conflict of interest and/or unelected power. Other members expressed concerns that it can be difficult to find individuals willing to serve, and it was agreed to have further discussion after the new mayor-elect took office and takes office in January. And that was the end of the meeting, and I believe we were done at five fifty P.M., and I'll move to file the minutes unless there's any questions.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to file the minutes. Councilmember Christianson.
Thank you, Mr. Anderson, or, Mr. Anderson. Mayor Pro Tem, Anderson. I'd like to amend, a couple amendments to the minutes. One is, my name wasn't on as being president as a member. Tim's name is stuck on there.
Yep, that is correct, I've caught that ear, I apologize for that.
And then also on the succession planning, it was brought up that we should be looking at succession planning for a new city administrator, as it is clear that our current administrator is looking to take a position in a different community.
That is correct. That is correct.
So noted. Councilmember Nelson.
I listened to the labor meeting, and I think that conversation was rather interesting, and I think it pertained to succession planning. I think this council needs to define what succession planning is, what that means. I heard two or three versions, different council people that were at that meeting actually thought it meant. And so I think I would have a question regarding, regarding some of the comments that are being made, and, and the recording is there for others to listen to. And so I question the amending of the minutes, per se, to add that particular statement, as I think there's probably a lot of staff that have the right to look for a position. And that doesn't mean that we're out doing succession planning for people who may be looking for career options. And I would encourage us at some point in time to deal with that conversation about what succession planning means.
Okay. Further comments?
I, just a quick comment to reply to, when you mean succession planning, my understanding was pretty clear that there would be an exiting interview at the, at the end, we would have a detailed description of the job duties and how they were being performed by that individual in each department, and that there would be a detailed list of ways to, to deal with all the job duties and descriptions and all the contacts, and that was, that's, I believe, what we, we talked about this sixteen, eighteen months ago, and we all.
We talked.
Agreed upon, upon that at the, at the meeting. And I'm just wondering why, I guess that was my interpretation of it, so that we can plan for future people who move into that position internally, and also to somehow have a smooth transition when people do retire or leave, so that we can have, we have the informational knowledge, or institutional knowledge, as some people refer to as, as something we have documented, so we understand what their job is, just to make it more efficient.
You know, I, I would concur with that, and I think the primary emphasis on the discussion was how do we pass on knowledge? And I think it was also pointed out that they have a form and some sort of a book where they, they write down all the duties, so I think we're in pretty good shape there. There was one individual that made the comment about the other part of the succession planning, and that was one individual's opinion. So, that's the way that I interpreted that meeting. So with that, any other discussion? If not, all in favor of filing the minutes, say aye.
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 Opposed, that passes. Community Development Report of December eleventh, Councilmember Fagerly.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, Pro Tem. Meeting was called to order at four forty-five. Item two was public comments, no one was there to speak to us. Item three was the tax abatement and business subsidy policy review. We reviewed the tax abatement and business subsidy policy as related to the Donner Oil Air Tax Abatement Request that we did earlier tonight at the public hearing. Item four, this is a motion, Railroad Project MOU. Staff presented a memorandum of understanding for the proposed Wilmer Y bypass project. The city was being asked to approve another MOU to be used to apply for federal funding in the year two thousand and fifteen. The MOU, with the exception of, term of the MOU was consistent with the MOU adopted by the council in two thousand and fourteen. I'll make a motion to approve the memorandum of understanding and execute the document as presented.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve the, I mean, the memorandum of understanding regarding the rail project. Discussion? Councilmember Nelson.
I'm supportive of it, I'm just wondering if there's anything else we should be doing. Councilmember DeBlick and I were at the railroad meeting that was being held, also at the webinar that I listened to, the League of Minnesota Cities is asking any cities that have railroads going through them to contact them about some of the things that are being worked on. So I guess I'm just curious who's championing, championing this, if there's anything else this council should be doing to be proactive with the plan that's being put in place for the next, Bruce, I forget how many years it is, two thousand and eighteen or something like that? I don't know if you have any comments.
The Department of Transportation is working on a rail study for the next five years.
I think it's important that we maybe have staff look into if there's something else that should be done. I know the league is looking for a contact to do that.
I think Mr. Peterson has a comment that he'd like to.
Yes, we continue to meet periodically as city staff, county staff, M.D.O.T., and representatives of BNSF to discuss the issues that are related to the Wilmer Y project, the Industrial Park Access project, and those talks over time will definitely include other topics such as improving rail flow through the city and dealing with the whole question of future rail service, passenger rail, whether or not that's a feasibility or not. So, we, we do meet probably every two to three months.
Councilmember Nelson.
There's a window of opportunity to put, have some input from our community in this future plan. I think they were looking for a response within the next month or so, that that plan will be coming out. I just wanted to make sure we were in tune to that.
Yeah, the, the plan that's going to be coming out isn't going to have a lot of detail to it, it basically sets future guidelines for consideration of changes in the rail system. Everything will be pretty much driven by BNSF, so that's why we've maintained our close working relationship with them.
Thank you.
Yes, sir, Mr. Halliday.
We have turned this into a resolution, if you'd be so kind, we didn't list that.
I'll make that resolution then.
Yep.
You okay with that?
Second.
So it was a resolution in support of the MOU. Okay, roll call.
Councilmember DeBlick.
Aye.
Anderson.
Aye.
Christianson.
Aye.
Amen.
Aye.
Nelson.
Aye.